How you doing?
Good, how are you?
We'll get started. Call to order, the July 1st, 2019 special meeting. The clerk will call the roll and record those in attendance. Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Bresnahan? Leahy? LaBarra Martinez?
Here.
Lisi?
Here.
McGee, here. McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Sullivan?
Here.
Tallman?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Ballantyne? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyo.
And the city council.
First item on the agenda is financial transfer to fund salary line items for Deputy Commissioner Veteran Services. The order reads, $13,206 from investigator to deputy commissioner. There's also another one for $8,150 from investigator to head clerk.
Make a motion to remove both items from the table for the purpose of passing the first reading.
Second. Is to receive, adopt, fast pass, a first reading under discussion. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Both these financial transfers are addressing the budget's failure, the mayor's failure, to fund the two positions, current positions, within the Veterans Department's budget itself. That would be, Mr., I believe it's the deputy commissioner in the part-time clerical position. Neither of these positions were funded when we received the budget. We did let the department know that if the new positions that were proposed, and there was some good arguments about them, failed to pass, that those positions would not be funded. So this is a form of correcting the lack of monies to pay for the existing positions. I believe they will cover, the money is being taken from the $35,000 that was originally put in the budget for the investigator position, which has not been funded since fiscal 2011, but transferring the current money that's left in that account, which is about $25,000 after last week, and putting part of it into the deputy commissioner and part of it into the part-time position. By doing so, these positions will remain open until the city council can look at the supplemental budget or look at other transfers in to keep these positions going for the 12 months. I think I don't have to tell anybody in the city council, but I feel I have to just state that it was not the city council's doing that stopped both of these positions from having funds, and we're happy to correct it, at least I'm happy to correct it, until we can figure out what we're gonna do for the rest of the year. We need nine votes to pass, we need eight, seven votes to pass the first reading. Because both readings will take place this evening, I'm guessing, we need nine votes to pass the second reading.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would like to further note that during the budget process, I had made a motion to try to preserve some of the money in the new position, but we were informed it had to be all or nothing. And so that required the one position to be left zeroed out. So in the second opportunity, I had made a motion to reduce the other line by 10,000 with the purpose of preserving monies in it that could then be transferred so that the people in the current positions could maintain their current positions. Thank you.
Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the necessary rules and ask the mayor to speak on these items, considering he called the meeting. I think he should speak to why we're here.
Second.
Motion is to allow the mayor to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Ayes would have it.
Thank you, Counselor Lisi. And thank you all for being here tonight. As you know, I called the special meeting for two reasons. Number one, to immediately get the transfers going, to make sure that the Veterans Department is back to fully staffed. And I want to thank Jesus, Wilfredo, and Minerva for the work they do on a daily basis in the Veteran Service Department. As many of you know, Jesus runs a great department, and I think you see that today with the amount of support he has, not just here in Hoyo, but across western Massachusetts. And I think our VSO in the city is regarded as one of the best in the area. As department heads do, they make presentations to the mayor about their next fiscal year and what positions they want to invest in. And Jesus, as the department head, made a compelling case to have both the investigator and the National Service Officer, two what you call sort of reconfigurations of the office. And so we'd still have three full-time people in the Veterans Department in the city. I agreed with that. It wouldn't make fiscal sense to fund five positions rather than three positions. And so we stayed with three positions. We looked at offices in other areas of western Mass. Chickaby, for example, has five staff members there. We weren't asking for more staff members. We were simply reclassifying the positions to make them in line with the work that the staff in the office is actually doing. And obviously, by not funding those positions last week, or by exerting sort of the legislative ability to cut positions, it leads to consequences such as having to lay off employees in the department, which would then open liability to the city. Nevertheless, there's transfers. And then, number two, there's a supplemental budget that restores cuts in the Veterans Office in particular, that actually does give the council the option when they decide to take action, whether or not you want to preserve the investigator and the National Service Officer, or go back to the clerk and the deputy commissioner. And so when you act on the supplemental budget, which you can do tonight if you'd like. There's also other items included in the supplemental budget. The mayor's office in particular, I know there was several cuts made in the mayor's office, notably $15,000 cut from part-time clerical, from $15,000 to zero. And I just, I want to just remind folks, this is a budget book from fiscal year 2007. And in fiscal year 2007, the mayor's office budget was $256,000. Thirteen years ago. My budget proposal to the city council for FY '20 is $243,000, $13,000 less than it was 13 years ago. And yet, the council still continues to cut $15,000 from that. $1,000 from a line item here, $1,000 from a line item there. We have staff, both in the mayor's office and throughout city hall, that were completely demoralized on Wednesday morning. Things like Celebrate Hoyo, things like the farmer's market don't happen on accident. We don't have an answering phone service in city hall where people call and can press one for city clerk, or three for veterans, or four for the law department. Every single call, person that comes into city hall greets the people in the mayor's office. It's the mayor's office staff that takes those calls, redirects them to other people. And to see, number one, an attempt to cut two of the three full-time staff members in the mayor's office, and then on top of that, cutting line items that actually go towards providing the service to the city. When I, as mayor, have continued to support the city council and their staff, I thought was a disrespectful and disheartening move for many people in city hall. And so the supplemental budget includes that, restores the cuts in the mayor's office, and also the $100,000 cut to streetlights. I met with Jim Lovell the day after those cuts were made. I asked him, well, what happens if we don't pay the bill for streetlights? He said the lights go off. And so that's a bill, obviously, we're gonna need to pay at some point. There were other cuts that were made that I didn't put in the supplemental budget, the IT budget, for example, with the understanding of that Wally would come back in the fall and make a presentation to the council as to why they're needed in the city and the work that they're doing, to make sure that the council is comfortable before you make the transfer back into the IT. And so the supplemental is not an attempt to thwart the authority of the council. It's a number of cuts that I think need to be restored as soon as possible to make sure that city government is maximizing its efficacy and impact on the people of the city of Hoyo. So I'm happy to take questions, but I just, again, want to thank a majority of counselors for being here tonight to take swift action to get people in the Veterans Office back to work as soon as possible.
Counselor Bartley.
Right, and we, did we hear from the mayor? Are we gonna, we're not gonna have a back and forth, are we, or are we, Mr. President? So we suspended, we allowed the mayor to speak, but he still said the microphone, so I'm just wondering if we're gonna have a back and forth.
That's to answer questions. That's what we should do.
I have no questions for the mayor.
If there's no questions, Counsel McGivern, do you have a question?
Mayor, thank you. And I know budget cuts and processes are very difficult to go through, and you and I have talked a lot about it. And certainly, you know, I support some, and in most cases, I don't support ones I feel are unnecessary. But we do have to look at the deficit in the revenue side, which is estimated. And I pointed out that the state hasn't even finalized their budget, which is a crime, if you ask me. But my question is just one issue. Now, one part of what you said was, in the argument, and Jesus did make a nice argument at the budget time for these new positions, and city counselors, you know, disagreed on their own grounds, and I won't speak for that. But he was asked by Counselor Murphy if the new position, the National Reserve, National?
Service Officer.
Service Officer. Was, would be Wilfredo's position. And Jesus' answer was, no, it would be posted, and Wilfredo would have to, would have to apply for the job. So we weren't just left with no money in the budget for Wilfredo's position. We were told he was not guaranteed a new position by the director of the Veterans Services. And that made it even more difficult to deal with that last week. But I just wanted to point that out. It was a tough one. But it was nothing against the two people that are working there, and it's nothing against having three people work there, as far as I'm concerned, and I think I can speak for almost everybody. We want the three, we'd love to have more if we could afford it. But we want the three people that are working there because they do a tremendous job.
Yeah, no, I agree. Thanks.
Anyone for a question for the mayor? Seeing none, back to Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I really want to compliment a couple of the earlier counselors' remarks. This was not the doing of the city council. Despite the rhetoric we read in Dennis's article, despite the rhetoric we just heard tonight, Mr. President, it's almost unconscionable how the executive branch makes a budget, defunds two positions, we take a vote with the arguments laid out in detail, Mr. President. For example, you don't get to fund, start a position through a budget. You do it through the city council creating the position. We talked about that. We talked about that in the building commission. We couldn't get that, we couldn't get that position cut. We lost that one on a six to five vote. We had six to cut it, five not to cut it. You need seven votes to cut. We lost that vote. But then we come around to the Veterans Department, the same thing. Two positions were created. The current two positions were not funded by the mayor. I cannot say that loud enough. Created new positions that were not legal. So we were able to cut those positions, didn't want to have to do it. It was just the process that was done. On top of that was the raises, Mr. President. If we could've done it another way, and I really applaud the comments of my friend, Counsel McGivern, earlier, this was, it was not the way we wanted to do things, but it was a hand with which we were dealt. It was very unfortunate. And then, and then to say, you know, I mean, if I respond to all the rhetoric that we heard tonight, Mr. President, we'll be here for another half an hour. We want to support the Veterans Department to a person in this room. And to think otherwise is nonsensical. And again, to have this article, and I know Dennis's skills in writing, there, every word was spot on. To throw the city council under the bus for doing our job because of the incompetence in the executive, Mr. President, is outrageous. And, well, I don't, listen, we heard a lot of rhetoric right there. I'm gonna respond to it in kind of, but I'll end in a minute. It's not fair, Mr. President. Talk about demoralizing. Demoralizing is giving raises to all your pals and skipping over department head year after year after year after year, Mr. President. That's demoralizing. And that's what's happened with this executive for the last seven and a half years. And to say, and to say the opposite, it's so unfair. But the truth has to be told. I mean, I'm just, I'm as frustrated by this as I've ever been. And now to, and now to see all these wonderful people, the members of Purple Heart Society came in and honored us, and we likewise honor them, to think that we, as a city council, would want to defund the Veterans Office that does so much for our veterans, our heroes? We have a hero right across the room. And Mr. Graney, when he was here, another hero. Would we do that intentionally? Of course not. Of course we're gonna do that. But you read this nonsense, and you hear that nonsense, we just heard it, the microphone, Mr. President. Oh, the nerve. The gall to even say that, Mr. President, is wrong. So my hope is that we will take the transfers, we all seconded what Mr. McGivern said, take, make those transfers, get those items funded, dismiss the supplemental budget, because it's just, it's not a fair, it's not a fair fight right now. We don't have, we have nine counselors here, and you need seven to, you need seven to make cuts. It's certainly not a fair fight. It'd be my hope, Mr. President, we could fund these two positions tonight, table whatever we have to table, and then adjourn until we're back in August. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to note that 5:30 is a really tough time for people to get here on any night. And the reason that the nine of us are here, in my view, the way I'm interpreting this, is because, as we intended to at the budget meeting, we are fully in support of funding the Veterans Office in the way that it had been funded. It would've been easy enough for one or two people, whether we agree or disagree with how things are done in one department or another, to have simply been unavailable. The reason that we're here is because we want to see the Veterans Office continue to do the work that it's done. So, thank you.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you. And just to quantify on what Counselors Bacon just said, and Counselor Bartley, just to quantify it for the public, what was presented to us was an $11,000 pay increase in one position, a 30% increase in one position. Take it or leave it, we had no other option as it was presented also. So to that point, when you're looking at, as we've said, people that have had nothing in 10 years, and then to be increasing one by, one position by $11,000, to me, that was a big stumbling block. All right? As far as the other comments made by the mayor in regards to the cuts to the DPW and turning off streetlights, that's true. The streetlights would be turned off in six, or seven, or eight months if the executive office continues to take no action whatsoever in restructuring the extra payments we're making every year on the LED upgrades that were made, which I have talked to the manager, and he is willing to discuss, or the 10 years it's been since their pilot agreement with the city has been looked at, over 10 years, which he is more than willing to look at also. And if you do the numbers on that, just a 3% escalation over that same 10 years would've been an extra $450,000 in our budget.
Anyone? Counselor McGivern, anything?
Just two things, Mr. President. I think, one is, yes, I agree, we should act on these two transfers this evening to keep the positions going. And, and two is, in a minute, we're gonna hear from our auditor on item number three. There's a lot of confusion about the city council's role with the supplemental budget process. And I asked the auditor to contact our DOR rep in Springfield to clarify that. I know from the past that supplemental budgets can be filed, I believe, almost up until the tax rate is set. And that certainly is an option that the mayor has, and certainly is, can be a good option in terms of, as time goes on. I've stated it many times during the budget process, when you make a budget cut, it's temporary. It's either for one fiscal year, or it's temporary until monies can be transferred back in. Transferred back in, meaning with the support of the city council. The issue before us, besides the two transfers on a supplemental budget, we need to figure out, you know, how much time we have to look at it. I don't even have a copy. I couldn't open the PDF file that was sent to me. So all I have is an agenda that says we're getting a supplemental budget. So I'd like to get a copy of it, and I'd like to perhaps set a, at your discretion, a special meeting at the city council in the future to act on it. It'll be interesting to find out if it's the same rules, I don't believe it is, that we have 45 days to act on it, or it becomes law. I believe it's more of a, acts more like a transfer, but we'll let our DOR rep weigh in on that and explain to us how we can do it. I do want to say one thing. Collective bargaining, when creating a new position or redefining a position, is necessary. And you can create new positions to, matter of fact, you really have to do collective bargaining as part of the process when a new position or a position is being redefined. And there's nothing wrong with the MOA coming in from the collective bargaining unit known as the Professionals Association itself, because that one position was part of that collective bargaining unit. However, collective bargaining, when you do it solely by collective bargaining, it's subject to appropriation. And when you do the appropriation in the budget, you're rolling the dice in terms of what's gonna happen if the city council disagrees with the collective bargaining new position, and you still need the money for the positions. And that's what I believe we all want to do, is correct that this evening, and to get on with business and have some good discussions down the road as to what the next steps are.
Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. I just want to make a few really brief points. Just want to, you know, reiterate a lot of what's been said already, that the budget is a really blunt tool to be making really important decisions, such as restructuring departments and reclassifying positions. And the city council really needs to be brought in on those discussions, because the city council needs to create those positions by ordinance. Otherwise, you run into the problems that Counsel McGivern just noted, where if a bargaining unit creates a position, it's subject to appropriation, and therefore, it is, it's a blunt tool, so you're getting all or nothing at that point in time. I do, just for the record, because it's been raised, note that I don't feel that, you know, the mayor is handing out raises to quote-unquote "his buddies." I think that it's been very clear that there's been a bargaining unit, the Professional Supervisors Association, that's been very aggressive in advocating for themselves and creating COLAs and professional raises that have been keeping pace with other communities. And I think that's really important if we want to attract and retain talent to these professional positions. We did adopt, or I'm sorry, we did receive a salary study five years ago, and many positions are not getting raises in city hall because our salary structure that's set by ordinance is already maxed out for many positions. So even if the mayor would like to give raises to different individuals throughout the city, they're absolutely capped by ordinance. We received that independent salary study five years ago, and I would believe that it's probably close to outdated, but it does at least move the needle for some of these positions. So I think there's been a real call for revisiting this salary study here in city hall, and I don't understand why it's not coming up again for discussion and consideration. Clearly, we need to make some changes for a number of individuals throughout city hall, and we just don't have the room to do so in our ordinances. Thank you.
Anyone further?
And a motion.
Thank you.
So just for everyone who's in the audience, you have two transfers before us. We took them up as a package. The first one was from investigator, $13,206, to deputy commissioner. Then, $8,150 from investigator to head clerk, to then fund those positions. Motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to second the pass the second reading. Mr. President, just a reminder that because the second reading is taking place on the same night as the first reading, the charter requires us to take a two-thirds, two-thirds vote, which would be nine members out of the 13.
You are correct. In order to act on something in the same night, actually, within a three-day period, you need nine votes. On a side note, with special meetings, especially your early ones that come up, Counsel Ballantyne contacted us. She is in Boston for work. Counsel Murphy is already in a prior obligation. Counsel Leahy is on vacation. And Counsel Bresnahan called, and he is at work. He cannot get out until later. So these are why these people are here. They're not skipping the meeting. They have valid reasons why they couldn't make it. Counsel Bartley.
Counsel McGivern just make a motion, second it? Did you just do that, Joe?
I could've, David, I'm not, you know? The president let me get away with it.
So make it official. I'll second them, I'll second Counsel McGivern's motion.
Tony Kane was famous for that. All right, so the motion was to pass the second reading. It was seconded by Counsel Tallman. Counsel Tallman, you have something?
Yeah, I just want to make a statement as a fellow veteran, and really appreciative of the people that are here tonight and serving. This is nothing, something that the council would ever do, to drop your benefits or to cut the people that work in that office. I'm proud of the members that are working out at the office. I've worked with them on different occasions, and really appreciative of the work they do. And I think tonight is a night to make it right, but we have a long way to go. We have to look at the future and how we make this position, these positions, work better for the veterans. So this is something that is unfortunate that came about, but every one of my colleagues here would never do anything to cut any veterans' benefits or any jobs in that department. So I just wanted to state that further record.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
So my father is a veteran, and he always told me, when the men and women who served this country were in front of you, you are to say, "Thank you for your service." So I just want to thank you all for your service. Thank you so much.
Well said for a rookie.
So with that, the clerk is gonna call the roll. We'll go in alphabetical order. If you're voting yes, you're voting for items one and two, because we're taking them up as a package. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan? Leahy? LaBarra Martinez? Lisi?
Yes, I'm sorry.
McGee, yes. McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
That's nine votes. Wait your vote, you approve the two transfers.
Mr. President, make a motion to take up item number three for discussion and suspend the rules to allow the auditor to approach.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion is allowed to order to come up. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Tanya, thank you for putting up for me this afternoon.
No problem.
The answers all were correct. And I think I explained, I don't want to jump the gun, because I think you did have a chance to talk to DOR. But could you help us with the procedure for our supplemental budget as to what we do next, or what we, how we approach what we can do next?
I can try. I contacted the DOR today just to see what they had for opinions out there as far as supplemental budgets. The only opinion they could really give me was, the question was whether the city council has to vote for all the supplemental budget, or not at all, within one period of time. And the answer to that was no. Other than that, the only information they had was pretty gray. And he provided me with this questionnaire, and it all says that the city budget, the council has 45 days. So I bought, brought copies of this for you. That was from 1997. He couldn't seem to give me further information. He said it was, it was very gray as far as the supplemental budget was concerned, but I can give you the information that he provided to me. He did say, though, that if the union was in years two or three of their contract and the positions that were budgeted for previous years, they need to be budgeted for the second and third year as well if they are the first year of the contract.
That should go, what I was saying, but can we, we can get a copy of this, but did you say there is a 45-day period?
It's gray. They don't, they, yeah, they don't have anything that says.
I just questioned that because I don't know how that would work. You know, 45 days is the typical period prior to the beginning of a budget that a city, a legislative body gets to review a budget, and it's a line item cut period. A supplemental budget is adding money to a budget that's, we already acted on, which typically, in the past, we've acted more like a transfer, but the money coming from an appropriation, not from another item already appropriated. And I think that's the clarity that we need to get, because if we did 45 days, it's gonna cause all kinds of problems.
I can definitely let you read the information I received, and you can, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't tell you for sure, but that was my perspective.
Thank you.
Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we need to get a clear opinion from the local services department relative to this, because my understanding has always been that we have the 45-day window from the submission of the budget till the end of the year, which is why we're always making sure we get it in the door and done by the end of June. So this, to the extent I've had an opportunity to review it, is more a goal of restoring cuts properly made by the city council during the budget period, rather than a supplemental budget, which would be different expenses coming in that were recognized that were, that had been failed to be included in the budget. So basically, this is just saying, I don't agree with the cuts.
So basically, this is just saying I don't agree with the cuts the city council made, which is a different process than a supplemental budget, from what I understand about it. And I understand there's a lot of law that speaks to this, but at some point, the budget process has to be over. And I think we met that point on June 30th, which is why we just made the transfers that we made. So, you know, I would need personally to see a communication, and I would prefer it to be a written communication out of the Department of Local Services, to show that we even have the ability to even consider restoring cuts, which is what this is. Thank you.
Counselor Leacy.
Thank you. I think to Counselor Bacon's point, the supplemental budget may just be a series of transfers that we're being asked to consider. So I would like to receive the supplemental budget and table it until we get some more clarification.
Second.
So the motion is to receive and table until we get, where are we getting the information from, for clarity?
Division of Local Services.
Division of Local Services.
EOR.
Okay. And that is the motion. It was seconded. No further discussion, you can't debate it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.